I'll call the meeting to order. Got the agenda handy?
I think it's just the public hearing, but it doesn't start till 5:15.
Okay, well, we've also got an A and R from Bill O'Beare that we put off from a few meetings ago. And I just sent out the A and R, he wants to do a conservation restriction. So we could take a look at that if you want.
I can't look at it and talk to you at the same, I can't look at it on the iPad and talk to you at the same time.
I can put it up on the screen.
Yeah.
All right, I will.
But it could. It may take, well, you think it's going to be quick?
I mean, it's, yeah, cut and dried, basically.
Okay.
I have to remember looking at the A and R for more than a few minutes, so.
Oh, do I need, I probably need to let you share screen, Don.
Yeah, probably. I've got it.
All right. Is anybody taking minutes?
It is for being recorded better than it was last week, last time. So this is recording.
Well, can Mary work from the recording?
I hope so. Has she been able to access them? Does anybody know? I know Brent asked for the recording a couple of meetings ago and I didn't follow up.
Well, it wouldn't hurt if somebody took some basic notes and I better not because I have to recuse myself.
Okay. We opened the meeting at 5:05. Now we're looking at Bill O'Beare. On Weber Road, this is where the West Whately Cemetery is, over on this side.
I see.
Everybody got this? Everybody seeing this?
I see LaSalle's.
Yeah.
You see no cell, not Weber Road.
Because I'm sharing. It's good to know what I'm looking at. There. Sorry, Don.
All right. Are you unsharing now?
We're seeing your stuff.
Okay. So Weber Road here. North is, is up this way. This is the Whately, West Whately Cemetery. And this is Massachusetts, right away, city of North Hampton for the water department. So here's, here's the house and they want to split out all this for conservation restriction. So this will remain in their name and this will remain their name.
Is this a lot that they did as an A and R before to separate out the compost farm?
No, no, this is new.
Well, I understand it's new, but the one that they're dividing now, is that the one they separated from the compost farm?
I can't answer that because I wasn't around when they did it.
For the Mahars?
It was only, it was only a couple of years ago when he went with Mike Maher. Anyway, I don't think it matters. So this is a conservation restriction, not an agricultural restriction?
Uh, yeah. Conservational restrictions are one, one that they get some money for, right?
Well, both.
Oh, well.
It's.
It says conservation restriction exclusion area.
Whereas an APR, EP, an agricultural preservation restriction, yes, you get paid for.
APR has to be managed by, as normally.
It's, it's different than, this is a conservation restriction. It's just on your, it's just on B, right?
I can't, I, can you, I can't see the frontage numbers.
Uh, hold on a second. Find my. So we've got 550 feet here and 189 plus 123, 188. So we've got 300 feet or so on each, 250 and 300.
Okay, it's on a public road, it's not straight access?
No, this is this is access for, for the town of North Hampton.
No, I know, but you can access it from the, it's, it's readily accessible from the road.
Yes. Yeah, there's a break in the stone wall down here and then they can get in on the North Hampton Road as well and also where the cemetery road comes in.
I move that we accept the A and R.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Brent, did, do you, have you done enough of these to know? You might have questions.
Brent, you're muted.
It was so brilliant what I said, but.
Dang, I just wish I hadn't missed it.
Yeah, I know, I know, me too. So, yes, I've not done any of these before. So I, I understand that the motivation is income for the person putting the land under this restriction. Is that correct?
Right.
Well, actually, Bill O'Beare is a major conservationist. I suspect it's more.
Okay, I don't, I don't mean to suggest that it's purely pecuniary. Is it irrevocable?
Yes, well. What he's doing is creating a new lot.
And it's not gearing change that is going to be a buildable lot?
I think that the lot behind it is already, where it says barn directly behind it is already under either APR or conservation restriction.
Well, the whole thing does say there's a conservation restriction exclusion area in that lot behind where the book, where the, that encloses the barn.
Yeah.
So that's, that preexists. So we're dealing with this 1.677 acre lot to the east, I guess.
Yes, and, and all we have to do is decide if it qualifies as under the provisions for subdivision approval, not required. And basically those are, that it's accessible from a public way. And it is.
Namely Weber Road.
Right.
Okay, because to the east, that's, that's a right of way, but it's not an active roadway. The.
And it doesn't, it doesn't matter anyway. Yeah, but, yeah, you're right. It's not an active roadway.
Okay. All right.
Although it is an active roadway when it goes off, veers off here a little bit to the southwest.
Sure.
And actually, from our point of view, the purpose doesn't matter either. It's, it's whether it's eligible to be divided this way.
God.
Basically saying you don't have to go through a whole subdivision approval, which is a very cumbersome process.
Okay. All right. I'm with the program.
Okay, well, I've been moved and seconded by Sarah. We approve this. Do a scroll call vote. Sarah?
Hi.
Don, yes?
Hi.
Tom, yes? Judy?
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, Brent?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. And it's now 5:15. Okay, so I'm going to start a public hearing. Site plan review for Whately Real Estate LLC, application for indoor and outdoor marijuana cultivation at LaSalle Forest Property 25A LaSalle Drive. And yes?
Good evening. For the record, Sophia Bitsis from Arlevak Associates here on behalf of Whately Real Estate Holdings LLC. Before you, as previously stated, for site plan review of an indoor cultivation facility to be located at 23A LaSalle Drive in Whately. Since the last meeting, there has been a few, some movement in the project. If I could just recap quickly. The community host agreement has been approved and signed off by the Board of Selectmen as of the end of December. We have also reconvened with the zoning board of appeals on the special permit for this petition as well. We had a, a great meeting last week. We do have a site visit scheduled and the next meeting scheduled for the first week of March. We had presented both our updated two narratives that have also been provided to this board as well as updated site plans. So if I may, through the chair, if I could share my screen, just to kind of point out the updates for the site plan?
I'll be through Sarah.
Well, we should welcome Mary. You're doing minutes, right?
All right, let's see. Hopefully this will work here.
Can everyone, can, excuse me, can everybody see and hear Mary?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
I got the first 15 minutes for you, Mary.
Okay.
I don't know. Do you guys see site plans?
We're good.
Okay, perfect. So let me just go make sure they're to scale here. So we, through the community meeting that we had and previous both planning board and zoning board of appeals meetings, we've had several comments from the butters and/or board members. So we have made some improvements to the plans to hopefully address some of those concerns. I will zoom in a little bit. So one of the items, the adding of the vegetative buffer. So we have proposed arbivites to be along the visual areas to be, make it more aesthetically pleasing to the butters, as well as changing the chain link fence proposed to a six foot vinyl fence proposed around the perimeter of the indoor cultivation facilities, still including the existing greenhouses as they sit currently on LaSalle property, but providing a more aesthetically pleasing buffer. I believe those were the only site plan updates that were made. We also provided two updated narratives to this board and to the ZBA addressing not only the special permit criteria, but also the table use regulations and requirements to allow locations for marijuana establishments, as well as the design standards. It's up to the board if they'd like us to go through item by item, or if you guys have had a chance to review the updated narratives, however you would like us to proceed.
Before you start discussing, I think I should say that I have to recuse myself. LaSalle's are relatives of, close relatives and so Mary, would you get that on the record, please?
Absolutely.
Point of, do you, in, in recusing yourself, are you not allowing yourself to ask questions or just, you're going to be mute on this?
I'm going to try to be mute.
Okay.
I, I would be happy to answer procedural questions if, if those come.
That's what I'd like from you, so thank you. So I've looked this over. Does anybody else want to go through it bit by bit?
One thing in the change is that you're proposing arbivites.
That's correct.
It would be lovely to have more of a mixed variety of plants in front there and particularly native and to some would be better. Arbivites are, that's a whole lot of arbivites.
It is, it is, yes. And we'd be more than happy if you'd like condition specific species proposed, we'd be more than happy to accommodate those.
That'd be great. I would, that's a condition I would like to.
Absolutely. Yep, no worries. Thank you.
So we, we will discuss what we'd like to see there, Sophia, and get back to you, okay?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Yep. Are there any additional questions or however you'd like to proceed? I can just.
Over the energy plan in more detail? Energy production plan?
Yep, so I'm going to turn that over to Neil, actually. Neil is actually on and part of the team as well, so I'll let him elaborate a little bit more on that.
How are you? Yeah, basically, our goal is to operate as high efficiency as possible. It reduces costs and preserves the environment. To that effect, we're going to be getting LED lights instead of more energy consumptive lights like like sodium halide lights and, you know, kind of like incandescent based lights, large ones. And we're also going to be employing, we're, we're looking into a few different systems to you know, employ climate control within the greenhouses and energy efficiency is our top priority. One thing that we're strongly considering is is using the, the ground temperature in order to, the stable sub, below, you know, below the free frost line or whatever, below four feet down, using that temperature to to lower the cost of heating the greenhouse in the winter and cooling it in the summer as well. Is there anything else specifically that I could speak to that you have a question about?
Lighting and energy and just there wasn't, it says that a plan is required and it this seems a lot of proposed things, but I didn't know if there was anything more set. And particularly, there's a lot of push on solar. Do you have any plans on solar?
I, I'm very pro solar. I definitely want to install, install solar if and where we can. And we have to obviously make sure that that's cleared and allowed and we certainly would would want to install solar. I, I believe I talked to the guys about that too much yet, but, but that's something that I really want.
Okay, so there isn't like a plan of line by line, this is happening, this is happening, this is happening. You're not quite at that point yet?
No, in the initial phase, we, we, we need to, we, we have a plan to get to revenue and we want to get to the point where we, where we can fund projects that are, that, you know, require more, more capital with revenue that we're, we're receiving. If that makes sense. So we're just going to start with, we're going to start with one greenhouse and then add, and then build another one and then another one and another one and go progressively in order to, in order to sort of make, make all of this happen.
So are we confining our, our review to the one greenhouse you're starting with?
We're talking about the facility as it stands now, including all five greenhouses that'd be within the proposed fenced in area.
If I could just clear.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is how do we, how do we evaluate a site plan review in total if you're only focusing on one part and don't have the details for the balance?
So if I could just clarify quickly, so what Neil is referring to is it's going to be a phased approach. The site plan as submitted is for all of the greenhouses, all five greenhouses. In its entirety, there is going to be a phased approach, though they are going to start first with green, they're not going to do all the greenhouses all at once. So they're going to start with greenhouse two, bring that one up, start growing in there, then they're going to do greenhouse one and they're just, they're not going to do all of them at the same time. So not all five greenhouses are going to be started initially. But it, this, the proposal before this board is for all five greenhouses. It's just not going to be all done at the same time.
So at, at what stage would solar be implemented?
Chris, do you have any idea to that effect?
Yeah, again, we, we have a, a couple of investment groups that are, are interested again, and they're, they're asking similar questions. And I think we are looking to build these out, you know, in a, in a reasonable and smart manner, which allows us to properly control costs and yield to make sure this is a viable project. So with, with regards to solar and Neil's commentary, if, if we're able to get to revenue quicker and have excess cash flow and we've built out the greenhouses, I think that's when we would step up and do additional capital investments that would reduce our, our costs and things of that nature.
And Judy, does that then constitute a, a change in the site plan? If it, if it's already not on record and planned out?
Yeah, it would be a whole nother site plan application. And I think unless it's solar on top of the buildings themselves, it would have to be an AR2, which
Right.
all of this is essentially an AR1, so.
So for the current plan, there'd be no solar in our plan, but it would be.
What I'm getting at is that.
It's beyond the scope of this.
Right, so if it is going to be installed, you'd have to come back and the neighbors would have an opportunity to review the site plan and so on.
Yep, no problem.
Understood.
Understood.
Of course, the, the initial solar installation, we do have a lot of roof space that probably 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 have, honestly, we probably have enough roof space to put enough solar panels to cover a whole greenhouse. We, we have quite a bit. So you know, we would start with that, obviously, you know.
And roof, roof, roof space is not subject to site plan review. That's, that's considered a building inspector issue. It's not a zoning issue.
Yes, I think the solar commentary maybe took us a little bit off, off topic. I think right now it's not in our current plan. I think we would do it at a later date and we'll certainly follow all the requirements to get that done, but it wasn't in our current plan.
So do you have an energy plan?
Yeah.
We're asking for one that proposes reductions in standard usage. I mean, I've heard it verbalized, but nothing specific in this.
For, for instance, your, your geothermal, is that going to be hot, water geothermal?
That's what we're considering, yes. There's a company called Series that they run pipes underneath the, underneath the ground and they circulate the water and that once the water comes out of the, out of the subterranean pipes, the temperature of those is relatively stable all year round and you only have to heat it so much or cool it so much to, to cool or, or heat the greenhouse. So that, that, that's, that's kind of how that system would work. The, the geothermal one.
Heat, oh, go ahead. Basically, it's a heat pump.
Yeah. And it's, but it's working less hard because you're, you're, you're pumping water that starts at a warmer temperature.
Right, or a more stable temperature.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you have a detailed energy efficiency plan?
The companies that install these systems on a project like this provide a lot of, a lot of info towards that. That's, I kind of, I have some stuff sketched up, but the real professional plans come largely from them. And we're working with them right now on, on those.
Because that is item number six. Detailed energy efficiency plan.
And if I may, if I may add on to what, kind of pursue the same thread that I think Sarah is. Because in your narrative, in the bylaws, there is a, a line about generating at least half of the anticipated energy onsite, right? It's right there, yes, in item six. So cultivators in buildings and greenhouses shall generate a minimum of 50% of their projected energy use onsite where feasible. Of course, where feasible is rather a big kind of loophole. So there's partly a question to my fellow board members about how the board has dealt with that in the past. But I would imagine that you, knowing the size of your greenhouses and the expected lighting, even low energy lighting that you're going to put in there, should have a reasonable estimate on a daily, weekly, monthly basis of how many kilowatt hours you would be using. And you would be able to at least speak to how you might be able to generate at least 50% of that onsite where feasible. I think that might be one aspect of what Sarah is getting at without trying to put words in Sarah's mouth.
Yeah, I'm looking, it says we're going to have a plan of some sort and yes, you can grow into things, but it doesn't have a very specific
Yes, if you.
Plan and it certainly doesn't say this is what is going to decrease it by such and such percentage and no real details there.
Okay, so I think it could be an accident for us to go and specifically document and review and maybe get more specific with that plan and come back with that.
That would be great. We'll ask Mary to condition that for me, too.
I would say that it doesn't have to be nailed down, but, you know, to, just to describe the systems you're going to be using. And you know, not, you don't need nuts and bolts description, but just a specific general, how does that sound?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Again, as a friendly amendment, I would suggest some kind of data informed estimate of your projected energy use. And if you're doing this in phases, you know, in your first phase, what's your, you know, annual energy use projected to be, given all your lighting and all of that? And then what's your projected, assuming you install various systems you're thinking of for phase one? How much of, how much energy might that generate to offset your anticipated use?
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have a question about the fact that and I know this, I think this is a, a, a later phase and maybe we're not going to deal with this here and now, but you're talking about a future expansion into outdoor cultivation. Is that correct?
No, no.
Not at this time.
Okay.
It had been an idea, yep, it had been an idea, but currently, the, under this current proposal, there is no outdoor proposed.
Okay, and, and it would clearly be another review process if you were going to.
Yep, amongst other permitting authorities, yep.
Good, okay. So we're strictly dealing with indoor cultivation at this point.
And, yep, and the existing greenhouses.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
I think I'm good.
We'll open the floor to anyone from the public that would like to chime in.
Hi, I'm Anne Lumley. I'm one of the butters. If I could ask a question?
Yeah, Anne, go ahead.
On your site plan, thank you. On your site plan, on the part of your property that faces the river, so I guess it's the back. It looks like you are going to have that fence, the vinyl fence, I think. Are you also going to have shrubbery and that kind of thing in the back? Doesn't look like it from the plan, I'm just asking.
No, we're just proposing for it to be visual from, from the butters on the side, I guess, on the, on the, I guess, I don't know what, if it's the southerly side. Yep, the southerly and the easterly side at the, at the matter. We don't want to obstruct the, the wetlands at all by adding additional plantings and invasive species and all that fun stuff.
Okay, I, I was curious though, because I'm the butter across the river and the beavers are taking down a lot of trees. So I was just curious of.
Yeah.
You put plantings that were native or something, that would be awesome, but I'm not saying it has to be.
Yeah, that, that would put us into conservation jurisdiction as well. So we hope to not disturb the, the wetlands at this point.
Okay, but the fence doesn't disturb the wetlands because it's not. Okay, all right. Thanks.
Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, more, more just a comment too, just so board knows. My name's Mark Sobolski. And I'm speaking on behalf of my mother and father, Alec and Teresa, and my sister Christine, who's also online here. My parents currently live at 13 LaSalle Drive and this property's been in our family for over 55 years. And just during this process, it's gone over about four months. We've come out and conveyed our opposition to this project to both the Board of Selectmen and the ZBA. So just want to make sure the planning board had a record of our views as well. We've got concerns about whether a cannabis cultivation facility really belongs in a residential neighborhood like ours. And we've got, you know, concerns around safety and security, potential harmful odors, as well as potential impact on property values. Now, having said all that, you know, I, I do want to say, you know, we've gone through this process over the past four months. And I do want to sort of say also that the folks from Can Select have been very responsive to us. You know, in terms of adding the lattice fencing and the, and the plantings, it's a real aesthetic improvement. They've also put in the fact that they're going to screen the greenhouses at night. Um, they've also put in the fact that they're going to screen the greenhouses at night, um, and have minimal lighting for security purposes. Um, you know, we still are concerned about odor control and I know that they're engaging with a, uh, with a company to develop an odor mitigation. Plan for the property. Um, so I guess, given all that, bottom line, while we still wish it wasn't happening. Uh, you know, we do understand that cannabis is a growing industry, you know, and certainly that John LaSalle, you know, would like to retire and move on from the floral business. Um, you know, and, and based on our experience with the town so far, you know, and certainly from what the questions we're hearing tonight about, you know, energy efficiency. Um, you know, and, and the, the good questions that you folks are asking, the town really just seemed to be looking out for a butter's interests. Um, you know, and again, in Canada Select is being responsive, so for that, we're appreciative, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Yes, I would very much like to go over the odor. Plan, criteria.
So as, uh, as Mark mentioned, yeah, we are going to engage, uh, with buyer Scientific, which is, uh, an odor mitigation company. That's worked with, uh, major cannabis cultivation, uh, operations in California, including Cannibie Growth, which is. Uh, I believe the largest in the country, uh, if not, certainly one of the largest, um. They have a couple of different, uh, strategies towards, um. Uh, towards odor mitigation, the first strategy is using sealed greenhouses where you have negative pressure. Uh, and the second strategy, um, is to use carbon filtration. And then the third one is to employ, um, uh, um, odor mask. Uh, like, uh, based, uh, systems where, uh, an additional, uh, sort of anti-odorant spray is sprayed. In the vicinity around the greenhouses and it works off of sensors. They, um. Have plans for monitoring the odor and things like that. Um, they do, uh, charge for, to officially, to officially engage with them. They will provide full odor, a full odor plan and materials to the town as part of what they, what they do. But we, um, we just were, uh, we wanted to just, uh, speak with. The zoning board and, and you guys at the planning board before we went ahead and engaged with them. Um, as we spoke with the zoning board before, they, they thought it was a good idea and so we planned on doing that. Uh, we just wanted to speak with you first as well.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we have, um, the exact, what, what each board is looking for specifically. So when we do engage them and, and make that investment, we're getting exactly what you need and we can actually probably have them. Our goal is to have them join these meetings and answer questions and, and provide a complete plan to, to both boards as well.
Have you, um, considered using, um, low, low fragrant or aromatic species or varieties of marijuana? I know when, when some of our other projects, um, we've looked at species that are, are varieties that are not as aromatic.
Certainly, um, uh, we will do whatever is, is necessary to keep the odor from being a problem. That's our main concern. If we are able to grow more aromatic, more pungent, uh, strains, but because our odor mitigation is so good that they still cannot be smelled. Then that's a double win for everybody, I think, because those are also desirable, as, as desirable as they are undesirable. To some, as they are undesirable to others, I suppose. But, um, but, uh, we definitely want to be able to leverage, uh. You, the unique, unique capabilities that a strong odor mitigation strategy might afford us. In order to make sure that we're a success, because we will have to, uh, pursue every niche. That the market, um, demands in order to, to survive in this, uh, in this industry. It's, it's growing fast, but it's also, you know, it's also gearing up pretty fast, so we have to really be strategic.
Well, there's another growth facility that we're looking at right now that, uh, has agreed not to do, uh, a variety called Skunk. And, uh. Evidently, it's pretty hard to mitigate that one.
But they're outside on. They're not in glass greenhouses, so I mean, this is a little different.
Yeah.
So I mean, yes, if we have, as per our bylaw, no odors at the property line. So that's.
That's our main thing, our career, want to commit to is making sure that there's no smell at all. If any strain does cause a problem, we certainly would not grow that strain. Or grow it in such small quantities where it wasn't a problem. Sometimes you can get away with just having a couple of plants that are more pungent. And it's not enough to be a problem, so, you know, you don't necessarily have to completely grow none, you know, it can, it can, you can do a, a variety of things.
Oh, this is from my, our fellow board members. We had a condition in the other project we're looking at about. Um, having the, the, the opportunity if, um, odor becomes an issue. Of taking steps to deal with that, uh, for consistency's sake, do we want to apply that same condition to this project? So that we have a standard across the township?
Yeah.
I would like to say yes to that and what I'll say is, in this, in. What Tom is bringing up is a lot of discussion that we had related to the, an outdoor cultivation operation. Where, you know, we can say in the bylaw that odor shall not be detectable at the property line. But, you know, there's wind, you know, stuff blows around and if it's growing outdoors. Uh, even the best of intentions may be undermined by a strong wind in the wrong direction, right? So, we, i- in that particular case, we, we, we want to be supportive and work with the cultivator. They're going to take all kinds of steps, again, that's an outdoor operation and yours is an indoor operation. But we kind of looked at this to say, well, we, we, even if you do your best and you're going to plant the. You know, the more aromatic, uh, varietals further away from a butters and so forth. We needed a, a way to kind of, uh, a, a way to say that if we do start to have problems. Complaints from a butters and neighbors, then we, we as a town want to have recourse to take action at that point. And so we had some language, so I think what Tom is suggesting is that our board may, for this project. Again, indoor, in, in theory, you should be able to do a much better job. At, uh, at odor mitigation than an outdoor cultivation operation. Uh, but we might still want to be consistent in our approach to you. With that same language. Um, and what we should do, do we have, it would be good not to surprise. Um, Canada Select with what that language is, can we readily show them? Or share with them, maybe we're not going to make all of our decisions tonight, but it would be good to make sure they know what that language means.
I think they're, they've already promised to come back with information, so we could get it to them in the meantime.
Yeah, it's just like a one-line condition.
Yeah, I think I actually saw it on another project, so we, we fully understand that and, and would expect that if we're, if, if it's becoming a problem, there'd be, you know, people. People have recourse and want to be able to shut it down or, or do something similar, so we, we could add in, our goal is to have the best odor plan and, and have no odor whatsoever.
And we don't want to get into shutdown operations either, right? We don't want to be threatening businesses that are going to establish themselves. And hopefully be profitable and be good for our community, but yes, when we hear from a, 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 a fellow resident like Mark. Um, we do care about the interests of the neighbors and that, as I'm sure you do as well. Lower probability of hitting that threshold, so it's just something that, that we can have to set a community-wide standard. And I'll, I'll note that Jared has put in the chat, oh, no, he just did that privately to me. I'm going to just, for the, since this was sent to me privately in the chat, I'm going to just put this in the chat to everyone, what that language.
I've, I've got the text for that, if you want me to read it off.
I just put it into the chat, so.
Okay, in event of complaints of excessive order, that one?
Yes.
Okay.
There it is.
Got it.
Thank you, Jared. So we addressed, we, we've explored, have we sufficiently, we've explored energy, we sufficiently explored. Um, odor mitigation. Sounds good. If I may just address a question back to Mark. Um, so you mentioned you, your, your primary concerns were, um, odor. Property value impacts, which, you know, there's a lot, there's a whole thing, you know, we're, we're not, we're. We have a, a particular position on that, um. But what, what were your other, just remind me what you, your other concerns were. It sounds like your, your. Your position is you'd rather not have this, but given all the changes that have been. The accommodations and so forth and perhaps further what you've heard tonight, um. You know, you could live with this.
Yeah.
Words in your mouth, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, you, you listed odor, you listed, uh, you know, certainly we've talked about odor, we've listed, you know, property values and granted, I'm not. I'm not familiar with the board's views on that, but you know, that, that's a legit concern. You know, safety and security, you know, certainly, you know, a, a marijuana facility, you know, is different than sort of a floral business that's there now. So, you know, there's a reason why there are fences and, and cameras and things like that, so I, I think about, you know, my parents, you know, living, I do not live there. I, my sister and I own the property, my parents, you know, is sort of a, you know, and my parents live there, so I think about, you know, there's, you know, safety and security.
We don't want them sneaking in there, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, I, I, I hardly think that would happen, but, uh, but you know, th- those are things I consider too. So, yeah, I mean, when I said, and I, that's, that's really all of the two. You know, and these, you know, and, and, you know, I, I do want to say, you know, the Canada Select folks have been very, you know, sort of responsive, you know. But at the same time, this is a, a new venture for them, you know, and I think, you know, they've had certainly success in other areas and, and that. And honestly, you know, a, a new business coming in with such a very, you know, with, with, frankly, with not a great track record of having. You know, I, I think, I believe the town of Whaley has approved, you know, maybe three or four of, of businesses like this and they haven't really. You know, gotten off the ground, so I mean, that, there, there's that too, so it's, it's, you know. Kind of a whole host of concerns that we have, um, but I will say, you know, as we've gone through this process. Um, you know, like we've been appreciative of what they've done and what the, sort of the town is in terms of looking for a butters, so it's not, um. You know, that's, that's, that, so it's true, it's like, what, what are we going to do, so. Thank you.
And just to re- respond to that, we did have a similar, um, couple of letters that came about at the zoning, uh, meeting. That we are going to formally respond to before the next meeting and it addressed a lot of those same issues that have come up, so there'll be a formal response to that, to those items. That we, that we received there, so.
Anybody else? entertain a motion to, uh.
I just have one last, I had a, a recollection and I couldn't find it in the updated documentation. And, and maybe I'm confused, but at one point I thought there was, under waste management. There is a plan that at some point involved spraying stuff in the field. And that's gone, right?
Yeah, we did away with that after, uh, after it was explained that that wasn't the preferred. We went out, we went to a completely different plan where we use filtration and we just reuse all the water. Then that's, that's it, we just reused everything, it's completely recirculated, you know.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then I'm good, Don.
Okay, well, I understand a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
Uh, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Oh, just, just a second, we, we were asking for additional information, do we close the hearing before we have that information?
I think you want to leave it open until you get the extra.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, um.
We'll continue with that.
We want to have all the, all the information in before we close the hearing. The public can, uh, also see the new information before the hearing closes.
All right.
So we're going to do a continuation of the public hearing at another meeting.
Yep, so Sophia will have to request that.
Okay.
No, well. I, I, I can, that's, so we request, respectfully request a continuance to the next planning board meeting to allow for us to supplement. The energy plan as well as the odor mitigation plan.
Hey, thank you. So, well now.
Could we, can we get copies of the letters that the zoning board has received?
I'll send them to you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, uh. Public hearing is continued at this point, not closed, so thank you very much.
To when? To, to the next?
Um, next meeting be okay with you, Sophia?
Yep, as long as, uh, Chris, do you have a timeline on the, um, odor mitigation plan and the energy? I just want to make sure that we can sufficiently.
Let's put up our next meeting, we're going to get in touch. This week.
Done, we've already got. The HANOM and zoning discussions for the next m- meeting. Is this, do you think this will be too time-consuming?
It shouldn't be and, and we're still not sure if, if the HANOM is going to be ready.
Now, that's true. So the next meeting is, is what, the twenty-third?
Yes.
February twenty-third?
Yeah.
If it's a Tuesday.
Yep, great, well, we will, uh, like I said, we'll get in touch with them this week and, and get to work.
All right.
Great, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got the stuff under other, is there anything else anybody would like to, uh?
I sent a letter around this morning or, or early afternoon about. To be sent to the select board.
Oh, yeah.
We discuss it tonight.
Yeah.
The solar facility that we, the solar bylaw amendments that we. Got approved at town meeting, set up a remediation fee for. Use of agricultural or timberland and it requires that the select board establish the size of the fee with input. In, from the. Concom and the Agricultural Commission. And so I asked Brian what the best way to get them going on this would be and he suggested we send a letter. So this is my suggested way to start the letter.
Yeah, I looked at the letter and I think we'd, we'd just go ahead and send it. Anybody else take a look?
I, I read it, I guess, um. Do we have anything, I, I don't even know where to begin with this, but do we have any basis for suggesting? What the fee ought to be or how it should, maybe this is none of our business.
Bylaw, so we didn't, um, I'm sure we can sit in on the meetings. I mean, I think that was part of making it. As true, you know, the people who know what this ought to be are the people who are in charge of protecting this land. And that's, that's really not us.
Okay, all right, because it seemed like.
I'm sure they would love any suggestions anybody had to give.
Because I don't know where to begin with this, but the letters seem very straightforward. Then it was just like, go ahead and do that, you know, we, we think this, you should move ahead with setting this fee.
Well, I, I really think it should be in place before. Before we get another major solar application.
Yeah. Um, would Conservation Commission be a good source for this?
Well, the select board is supposed to consult with, the bylaw requires that they. Select board get input from both the Ag Commission and the Conservation Commission.
It seems that the Conservation Commission to be the one that's best suited to come up with, at least know how to go about finding this through other, um, other.
Well, we've had a lot more land taken from farmland than forest land, but. Actually, the APR, the APR is much easier because, because the state has pretty rigid formulas. Um. And they're. And the APRs will be cheaper, I think, because the local portion of the, of the protection is much smaller. It's only five percent of the. The value of the APR, but. Anyway, I. I think in order to preserve the integrity of the fee. It should be the, these committees who, who opine. I'm sure they can hire, they can look for outside help. I mean, they both work with land trusts and that kind of thing.
Um, I think for the farmland point of view, the American Farmland Trust would be a good, good source of information.
And John Devine is, is still, um, Department of Agriculture, I think, or. So they'll, but I, it's the select board that has to get this ball rolling.
Yeah, well, now, I've got one other thing under other. Brian would like to, Nicholas was our representative to the capital improvement planning committee. And, um, we need somebody to, uh, represent us at that.
And what does that involve?
Uh, about a meeting a year, I think.
Now, Brian wants to make it a lot more, um, proactive and more time. Would Nicholas be willing to continue and feed back to us?
Probably, probably not.
Who can ask?
Well, I, Brian specifically asked me to get someone from the board.
Okay.
So this would be representing from planning point of view or a financial or?
But from planning, from the planning board point of view.
Okay.
It's a financial committee though, so, but to get, it's, their job is to prioritize the, the future capital.
Stuff in town. Judy, you're pretty, uh, you got your fingers in lots of pots.
I, I am forbidden from volunteering for anything.
Go Bill.
The rule of the household.
Excuse me, could I please have again the exact name of the committee?
Capital planning?
Capital budgeting, I think.
Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Thank you.
I had to look up the email.
If it's one a year.
Brent, can I talk you into doing that?
You could. I was thinking that with barely a few months of all of this under my belt, you're taking somebody who knows, throwing them into another committee, but.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you a story. Ten, ten years ago, Paul Florial, who was then the town moderator, said, could you be on the planning board? And I said, well, yeah, I could. And he said, oh, by the way, you're going to be the chair. I managed to fumble through it, so I think you'll do fine.
All right, all right. Go ahead.
All right.
I won't tell, I won't tell my wife.
All right. Thank you so much.
But let's hope that the, it, the workload doesn't ramp up too soon this year. It's crazy on campus.
All right, yeah.
But go ahead, throw my name in and I'll do my best.
All right. Well, if you can't make something, I will be the alter, alternative.
Understood.
I was happy.
I think, I'm sure Nicholas would be happy to fill you in on what he knows.
And I actually owe Nicholas promise to, um, you know, give me some lessons about how to be a good planning board member. So I need to take him up on that. But it was going to be, we're going to sit on his deck and have some iced tea and he'd regale me on A and Rs. And COVID is just like not making that possible. And the winter.
All right.
There is another, uh, another, other item. And I just want to again, this, uh, this thing that came up, Judy from, uh, DNCTC, this information about outdoor cultivation and the various definitions. So you forwarded something on to Brian. I have not seen any response, have you?
I haven't either.
And I know Jared is still potentially listening in on tonight's call, so I'll just simply say a let, there's Jared. Okay, so Jared, uh, Jared shared some very useful information. He went a little bit beyond what I, which is fine. Uh, what I sort of asked for was like, point me to the right places in the CCC, you know, regs about indoor and outdoor cultivation, all that sort of stuff. And, and that he went beyond that, but he also provided a, um, what I might describe as a CM, DNCTC point of view, you know, in addition to sharing, just like, here's this definition and that definition. It's good material. But for transparency, uh, it seems like it ought to be shared with the entire board.
Now that you've discussed it, it definitely has to be.
Yes. So, um, and it seems like you're, there's, my assessment is that there's nothing in what you shared, Jared, that is, you know, privileged confidential and, you know, and that it, it, we, we can simply, in its existing form, with no need for you to do it, take any further action. I'll just circulate that to the rest of the board. And you're presumably okay with that. But understand that, you know, this is like, maybe this is bad on me for potentially putting you in the position. Now what you've done is be, it, it becomes a public record.
Uh, Brad, I, you sent around background and terms in CC on Monday. Is that the document you're talking about?
Yes, that document was prepared by DNCTC.
Right. And you, and you said that in the email.
I did. But I still want an opinion from just you, Don and Judy.
Gotcha.
It hasn't circulated to the entire board yet. But now, by opening my big mouth, Tom and Sarah are going to get to see this too.
Well, that's what I said. I was pretty sure Brian was going to tell you that anyways.
Okay. All right. So.
Yeah.
What was that, Tom?
I'm sitting on the edge of my chair in anticipation.
Want me to forward it right now?
Go ahead. Let's just get that done.
All right. I've got it up. So I have to go ahead and forward it.
Okay. Appreciate it. I don't know that I have anything else. I'm going to follow up with Sarah and Tom, by the way, just about the, and pro, and I'm sure Mary about the, um, my, my little thing about the shared drive. So I'm going to get you some passwords and stuff to connect to it. We haven't really been using it, but at least I'm going to get you connected onto it. It's really easy.
One Drive or what, what is it?
Yeah, it's OneDrive. I'll just send you the, the, the email address that you use to log in and the password to it.
Cool.
And then we collectively, because it's like even whether it was LaSalle or whatnot, it's just nice to have one place to go looking for all the different documents. And if we, you know, I don't know, Sarah, if you're, are you, have you, have you used them enough to know like how you would go, since you seem to be able to log in to, like to run tonight Zoom, you know how to find the, the cloud recordings and download them?
I haven't figured out that much yet. I try not to record any of my Zoom meetings.
Okay.
For work. This is the only one I love being on camera for.
Cause I can some point show you how to do that. It's very easy. We have to log in through the browser.
Okay. So you got the info you needed from that couple?
I don't.
Months ago.
I, I would need, for me to do this, I would need to have whatever email address you're using to log into Zoom and the password to run, run these meetings. And then I can log in and I could download these recordings and store them on OneDrive or wherever.
Don, what's your, uh?
Say again?
You want to share that info that you shared with?
I would check with Brian because I think initially they weren't keeping the recordings for longer than six months or something, or three months. Whether that's still true, and whether it's true for all meetings, maybe different for public hearings than for,
Right.
for other things.
What I found was on YouTube.
Yeah, but it's not happening automatically. And that, none of the, you know, I can't find any minutes of these meetings and I can't find any recordings of these meetings anywhere current. It's just not being done.
Mary, can you start posting some of those?
I, I am, I have gotten behind in writing the minutes. That's why the ones, and since Jared's, but since, uh, Brad's been on, you haven't had a chance to approve them yet. They're still working on them. I will have planned on saying to everybody tonight, you'll have them all by the next meeting.
Oh, goodie.
It's because they don't exist yet.
Okay.
Not all of them. I mean, the, the, I'll check to see what, you know, if there are any more that, that are approved that I can send to, to be posted, that maybe I didn't send yet. That's, but the ones that, uh, Jared's mostly talking about that he's been involved in, you haven't seen them yet.
What did I miss when I went kerfluey? And I hope nobody has a spare at my computer.
We were talking about minutes and that I would get them to everybody by.
Ended up topping out at the, uh, in the public hearing. So where did that go?
Tonight?
Yeah, I went.
Oh.
Yeah, I disappeared.
No, I, I thought you were still there.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. I was gone.
Ah.
We continued it. We continued till next, till the 23rd.
Yeah.
And they're going to provide an energy plan and a, um, odor plan.
Okay. Yeah, I left off, I disappeared in the middle of odor or towards the end. Okay. So it didn't go on much more than that, just going, we want more. Something more than, yeah, we got that?
Yeah, we talked about the order a bit and then, uh, so there, we continued it. They're going to provide the odor plan and the, uh, power usage or the power saving.
Are we going to, um, discuss what type of plantings they would want? Since I opened that one.
Oh, yeah. Why don't we do that? Um.
I think we should, we should do that as part of the public hearing and part of the, we, there's nobody here now involved. So I, I think we better wait till next, next time.
Okay.
And we might, as a reference, we might want to, um, present, uh, the plan that was done for the project before this one.
DNCTC?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Don, I think you might also suggest that they present a formal list of plantings anyway.
Cause we had this conversation with them, so that, that could be a starting point. I mean, this has been done.
Yeah, yeah.
And documented.
I don't think their list of conditions though had, had the names of the plantings.
No, but they documented them in their plan.
On the plan, yeah.
Okay.
Jared, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I can, I can just send you the list of, uh, planting types that we have. They're on the plan. I think it's American holly and birch trees.
Okay.
That would be so much nicer than.
I think so.
Arbor by the.
Yeah.
Nothing wrong with one or two, but.
Yeah.
Row.
Well, it's deer food too. I mean, you're, you're, I mean, that, in that neck of the woods, they're going to have a deer problem with arbor by the.
Arbor by the would be horrible there.
Good eating.
Yeah, if you just send us that email, that would be fine.
Happy to.
Thank you, Jared. I really do want to run to ground this thing. I'm sorry to be on this, but about the, the, these meeting recordings. So Judy, you seem to say something about, that I didn't understand about the recordings don't get kept around for very long. So is that a policy?
I don't know when I, all I know is when I first, the first time I wrote, on the historical commission, we take turns writing minutes. And the first time I wrote minutes for a Zoom meeting, I asked how I should reference, I asked Brian how I should reference the, the Zoom link in them. And he said, well, just put the access information. We're not keeping them for more than X, and I'm not sure now what X was. I think it was, might have been 30 days.
I think I can speak to that.
That's still the policy, whether that applies to all meetings. It might be different for public hearings or things like that than it is than, than a historical commission meeting, which never has any outside participants anyway. So, but I, so I don't know what the policy is. I just think maybe we ought to know it before we decide anything.
So the, the point that I, I want to make is that, like right now, Sarah has turned on, throughout this meeting, this whole meeting has been recorded. And that recording, the way she's, you, you did it, Sarah, via cloud recording, right? Like you're not recording on your local machine.
We're using the town, a town.
I understand that. I do understand.
Turned on automatically, Brent.
It goes, Amy Schrader at Town Offices has the, has the capability to access them.
Oh, interesting. So, but presumably even though you, we log in, there's just, so what you're saying is when you log in, Sarah, and start this meeting, recording automatically starts at the same time.
I am using the town administrator's login.
I understand.
Okay. So I mean, this, none of this is my personal information.
I understand that too.
Yeah.
But when you start.
How they set it up and how they access is different than I set up my own personal one.
So you don't push, like, you don't turn a recording on, it's just on.
It comes on automatically. And usually when I'm sitting around for the first 10 minutes,
I see.
I shut it off. And then I, once I let people starting in, I usually remember to turn it back on, unpause it.
Cause the, ideally you'd think for somebody like Mary, Mary would like to be able to access these recordings and confirm that she got certain things right.
And Mary is looking totally shocked.
You know, and it basically turns into just a, a movie that you could play on your computer with audio and video. But you'd have to download that.
So much better, succinct.
Yeah, yeah. Wow.
Well, Mary can ask Amy for them.
But I know, Don, you told me to go looking at someplace on the Whately site where meetings are, you know, meeting recordings are supposedly posted. And the last meeting of the planning board that was posted is sometime in like the summer of 2019.
Yeah, that's when FCAT was recording them. So, um, right now it looks like the only things, I just looked at it and the only things up there are select board meetings. So I think.
Which are broadcast, which are broadcast in FCAT?
Yeah. So I think Amy is, is the, is your answer.
Cause, Brent, our official, we've never used to record and we never used to have somebody record them only with COVID. So Mary would always do our paper minute and upload them. So.
Yeah.
Which I actually, I prefer that more than.
And, and I don't know if you know, FCAT is the local community cable.
Okay.
But we should have more minutes out there other than we've, Mary's gotten them to us, we've approved them and it's submitted them and certainly.
But not lately.
Right. Not in the last couple of months, but our old minute should be on there.
Not at all.
Um, Mary probably needs to send, send those in. Cause I think February was of last year was the latest one.
The latest one that's posted?
Yeah.
Well, I'll take care of seeing what else has not, I'll take care of it.
Thank you, Mary. Life did go kerfluey after that.
Apparently. All right. Like I, again, I wasn't trying to make a, a federal case out of this or a, or a.
No, I mean, you'd like to know.
County case out of this.
From history, yeah.
But, but I thought that if, if there was value for reference, if, since the meetings are being recorded and we can simply access recordings and download them and save them for some period of time, it's not hard to do, I believe. And we don't necessarily have to go through Amy Schrader if you can log in with the town administrator credentials. But if no one sees a need for it, I don't necessarily need to worry about it. Seemed like the minutes are the most important thing.
I think those are our, our official documentation.
Okay.
I mean, that is what we vote on. We don't vote on the videos, or at least we haven't changed
Yeah.
system yet to that point. Or protocol.
Mary, January, February and March are listed on the web, webpage so far, so.
I'll get, well, yes, you're right. There are others that have been approved.
Okay.
I'll, I'll check with Amy and if she doesn't have them, I'll get them to her. And the ones that I have. the ones that I haven't.
No.
You'll get them.
Really? Come on.
Okay, did we lose you again, Sarah?
Yeah, I think we lost Sarah again. And that was the sound before. We don't have anything else anyway, do we?
No.
To log off.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm just looking at the Town of Whately website for Planning Board Meeting Minutes. And the only thing there, if you look under minutes for the planning board, uh, 2021 is of course not even listed yet at all. For 2020, last year, there are minutes posted for January, February and March of last year of 2020.
Well, that's what, that's what Don just said.
Okay.
So I'll check.
Mary's going to check COVID.
And if, if, if they're not there because Amy doesn't have them, I'll send them.
Okay.
Because, yes, many more of them were approved.
Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, there was a reason why, there is a reason why I was bringing up this whole thing about the, the meeting recordings. This is all, I'm going to blame you for this, Judy. Because Judy, you got me taking this How to Be a Planning Board Member course. Thank you very much. And there is a whole thing about if you're, if you miss a meeting, as I did, you may recall, I missed a meeting. And that if you miss a meeting, uh, you are obliged, in order to be able to participate in any discussions at future meetings that are related to something you missed. You're obliged to read the minutes, recordings, do whatever you can do to get yourself caught up.
That's for special, that's for special permits.
Just, are you sure? It seemed to me just a general rule about whether it's public hearings.
No, it's, it's special permits.
That happened with one of the zoning board meetings. And it happened to be, they could recorded it just so the missing member could catch up on it. But of course, most of what they do is special permits.
Special permits are required to have a super majority. And they're also required that the people who vote participate or be at every meeting.
I see. All right, so maybe I overgeneralized. But there's a, there's a potential case where some of us, one of us might miss a meeting where we need to access the recording. So I just kind of wanted to establish a precedent that there's a way to get to these recordings.
Yep.
Okay. I can declare victory for one, right?
I'll move that we adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Uh, roll call, Brent?
Aye.
Don, yes. Judy?
Yes.
Tom, yes. The meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Now, can you, can you log off or does Sarah have to?
No.
Uh, I think if we all stop, it'll go away. Oh, there she's back.
We just adjourned, Sarah.
I agree.
Okay.
Good night, all.
There's this weird comment when you, when you disappear. Like somebody says, oh no, or how did that happen?
Brought the SH word, so it's good y'all.
We, we missed that one.
Didn't, I haven't gone to the F word, so.
Well, you can do all those as long as you don't do the N word.
Yeah, no.
All right, goodbye, everybody.
And thank you, Mary, as always. Thank you.
Good night.
Mary, stay on for a minute.
Okay.
Um, so we started the, the, the meeting at 7:05.
Okay. Hold on a moment, please. I'll go back. Okay. No, not seven, it's 5:05?
I'm at 5:05, sorry. We did, um, an ANR for, Bill O'Beare.
Noah?
Bill O'Beare.
Bill, Bill O'Beare, okay.
Yep. Um, Judy moved that we approve it. Sarah seconded, and it was unanimous.
Okay.
And that's about when you came in, so.
All right.
So we, we did open the, uh, the public hearing, but.
Well, yeah, when, when I came in, you were, you were just starting. So I, I figured you probably started it at 5:15 or 5:00.
We started at 5:15, right? Yeah, because we, you know, finished up it.
That was, yeah, and that was the scheduled timing.
Yep. All right, see you next month. No, see you the end of the month.
23rd.
Yep.